Okay.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Coast Mashes Sanitary District Study Session of August eleventh, twenty twenty. Rule call, please.
Dr. Arthur Perry.
Here.
Dr. Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Yeah.
Vice President Bob Oden.
Here.
President James Fairman.
Present. Public comments. This, this is a time set, set aside for persons in the audience to make comments on items within the subject matter. Is there anyone there? Are there, is there any public there that would like to address the board? Having. Uh, okay, let's move along. Items of study, uh, Ed, do you have something for us? Uh, is this still on furlough?
I think, I think we're at, uh, Mike.
Sorry, yeah, Mike Berry.
Mr. Curryman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's, uh, good morning, it's Ed Roberts, sir.
Oh. Okay, uh, I, my mind, let's see. Mike Carey was before you, I think. Is Mike Carey in the house?
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, uh, uh, Ed, uh, we'll, we'll get to you in a minute.
No problem, sir.
Mike, uh, welcome. On behalf of the Coast Mashes Sanitary District, we're thrilled to have you onboard. And, uh, you know, if you'd like to say something right now, we, we certainly entertain that.
Uh, thank you, President Fairman, I'm, uh, happy to be here and happy to, uh, work with you in the district and, um, uh, represent CRNR on, on behalf of the Coast Mashes Sanitary District. Very happy to help.
Looks like you got a few, uh, aluminum cans back there.
Right, yeah. From a previous, previous time.
Uh-huh. Well, listen, once again, welcome and, uh, you know, don't, don't hesitate to, uh, ask questions and, uh, yeah. Uh, okay, let's, um, Ed, it's your turn now.
Uh, good morning, sir. Um, President Fairman and, uh, members of the board, Ed Roberts shall be presenting your July two thousand and twenty, uh, Code Enforcement Officer Report for the district. Uh, for the month of July twenty twenty, uh, conducted a series of four investigations throughout the city. Uh, these involved in-person contact with scavengers that were observed, detected and contacted. Um, no items of note, sir, a- and, uh, the board. Uh, everything went real smooth, uh, as usual, uh, persons contacted in the public area. Uh, you know, the violation is noted and I just asked that the, uh, individual replace whatever recyclable material was obtained to nearby car and then just send them on their way and kind of escort them out of the area to make sure we don't have a recurrence, at least on that same day.
Right.
Um, move, a- a- any questions regarding the scavenging report, um?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I see on here, it's a, another one on Royal Palm.
Yes, sir.
Was it anybody from some that you met before or someone different?
Yes, sir, and it's, it's one of the, uh, the folks I know. Okay, let me, uh, if you give me one moment, let me, uh, reacquaint myself. Uh, twenty-nine eighty-eight, yes, sir. Uh, it, it is a person I have contacted in the past, it's, uh, one of those folks, uh, you see often in the area.
It, it's the same, Ed, it's the same guy that's in the alleyway.
Uh, yes, it is, sir. Uh, ju- just for the benefit of the board, uh, the, the, the person that, uh, Mr. Schaefer's referencing is a, uh, occupant of that area, uh, sleeps and sets up an encampment in the various areas, the, the police is aware of him. Uh, the, the man has, uh, what I perceive to be some mental, uh, issues. Uh, he's kind of difficult to communicate with, uh, so i- it's just in the interest of safety and efficiency, uh, take a real soft touch with that, kind of just guide through the process and then just send him on his one of the folks that we have to do regular maintenance with.
Yeah, I, I've noticed, he's, he's bold enough, he actually opens up the enclosures that are in the alleyway and, and goes into the receptacles that are in the, in, in the, the, the guard or the gated areas, so I'm sure he's a tough one to deal with.
Yes, sir, and, and as you, uh, by the address, uh, twenty-nine, excuse me, bear with me, uh, twenty-nine eighty-eight Royal Palm, I put it right there on the map, it's right by that curvature, uh, closer to Baker Street and, uh, it, it always tends to be in that rear lot area affronting the, uh, the alley.
Officer Roberts, is that the, is that the old gray-haired guy on bicycle?
Uh, no, sir, uh, gentleman is, uh, long-haired, uh, bearded and probably a good six feet two, pretty a lanky person.
Oh, yeah, okay, I, yeah, I've seen him in there.
I know, I know, Bob, Bob spends a lot of time in that alleyway as well.
I, I've seen Mr. there often.
Well, that, that guy beats me to most of the cans.
Mike, I like that. Mike, that's right behind your office there.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
And, uh, are, are there any other questions regarding the scavenging?
Anybody have anything for Ed? Okay, Ed, thank you very much for that good report.
Okay, sir, uh, it, sir, I've got one more item, just wanted to mention quickly. Um, also in the report are a hundred and twenty-three, uh, locations throughout the city that were contacted in the month of July twenty twenty. Uh, first offenders, uh, I'm sorry, first offenders and kind of some repeat offender folks. Um, so i- if, if anybody has any questions regarding that, uh, please let me know.
Any questions, Ed?
Yeah, Ed, is that the average number or is that a little bit higher than normal?
Uh, you know, I, I actually, sir, it's kind of been an uptick, um, I, I've been averaging between, uh, anywhere from about ninety to about a hundred seems to be the norm. Uh, and, and, you know, I'm judicious in the way I, I contact folks, you know, like, I'll, I'll give them a day uh, after the, the card hauling day, just to see if it's, it's going to be an extended, you know, out in public view or not. Uh, this one is a significantly higher number than usual, um, yeah, one, one twenty-three, I'd say beats the average by about twenty, uh, violations.
That's, that's what I thought.
Uh, Officer Roberts, can I ask Mike Carey a question? The, the, the people that are scavenging, where, where, where can they get rid of the vehicles and models and whatnot right now?
A, a lot of the, um, a lot of the people without vehicles are taking them to the location, um, at Fairview and, uh, MacArthur, there's a supermarket there that has a little, uh, recycling station and I think that's the the closest one other than returning them to a retailer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Let's go back to Mike Carey for a second, quick, quick. Mike, could you give, uh, Scott that address, because we can add that address for recycling to the list of ones that we could go to now that OCC is not open?
Yes.
Thank you. Sounds good, thanks.
Okay. Uh, no, no other questions of Ed, thank you, once again.
My pleasure, sir.
And, um, Scott, we've got Organics Recycling Report.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, the organic recycling report is, there's nothing to report this month, uh, we, uh, CRNR, uh, were unable to submit their reports, uh, because our meeting is roughly early in the month. So, uh, we will have the organic recycling report, uh, to, at your, uh, September, uh, board meeting.
Okay, thank you. The NABILA and, uh, the Solid Waste Report.
I, I'll, I'll take this, Mr. President, again, this, there's really no report to give, uh, this is a reminder and to you and to the public is that, uh, this, this report has been temporarily postponed, uh, due to, due to COVID nineteen, uh, we know that the, the numbers, um, uh, aren't, aren't accurate right now because, uh, at the, at the direction of the board, this report is completely suspended until further, further notice.
Well, Scott, maybe this is a question for Mike. You know, CRNR obviously, uh, weighs all the material and knows where it goes. Um, I, you know, I, I fail to understand why they can't give us some information on, on the diversion. Um, you know, they, they're still charging us, uh, based on the tonnage that they collect and they know where it goes. Um, yeah, Mike, Mike, do you have any idea why, uh, you, you know, they can't, why they can't give us a report?
Um, I'm new enough there where I don't have the answer to that question yet, but I will find out.
Yeah, I mean, they obviously know where, you know, they obviously know what they collect and where it goes, because they, they, you know, they, they have the ability to turn this for us.
Correct.
Okay, well, Mike will find that out for us and, uh, report back.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item five, discuss suggested revisions of the Policy Review Ad-Hoc Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Scott, is that yours?
Yes, I'll take the report, thank you. So, on May twenty-third of two thousand and nineteen, uh, the board approved creating a policy ad hoc committee. On that committee is, uh, Directors Perry and Schaefer. In addition, uh, members serving on that committee, uh, it was, um, um, Stephen Takahashi and Monte Fields, but, uh, Commissioner, or I'm sorry, the committee, because he just, uh, was attending the meeting, so, uh, he was replaced with Stu Lester. Uh, the committee, I think the most of them, they met with five times, uh, reviewed, um, all of our, our, our policies, including our employee handbook, which was a lot of personnel matter, personnel policies, uh, administrative policies. Then there was a new handbook, uh, for you to, to review, uh, is, is, uh, more direct procedures handbook. So it's a lot to go over today, um, suggestion is, is to take a one, one documented time, um, staffs available to answer questions you have. Once we get your comments today, we'll bring this back, uh, to your August board meeting for formal, formal adoption. And this is, the timing is really good because, uh, we're in the process of submitting our certificate of transparency uh, and also our, our district distinction to CSDA. In order to do that, we have to have review all our policies, so the timing is right, so this is a good time to, uh, review the policies and, and, um, adopt any revisions and then we can submit our applications to CSDA. So first on the agenda, Operations Code, uh, on the staff report is some suggestions, uh, provisions within the code. Happy to answer any questions you have. I also want to mention that, um, Alan Burns has reviewed and commented, um, on the, um, Operations Code, uh, the, uh, administrative policies and the, um, Board Handbook. And, um, Burns is available to answer any questions. Um, our, our law firm that we hired to handle our, our personnel issues, Lee Recast, we viewed the, um, employee handbook. I do want to mention there was two policies that were submitted, reviewed and, and was after the beginning posted and that's policy number one point two and, and three point four, um, and that is regarding, um, regarding, um, uh, one point two is harassment, discrimination, retaliation and three point four is drug, alcohol abuse and contrabands. Uh, we did not put that in the, in, in your staff report today because those were submitted after the Gino's posting. We will submit those revisions to you on your August board meeting, review and comments. So if the board pleases, if you want, we can go over the Operations Code first, any comments or, or questions, we can talk about that now.
Hey, Scott, yeah, Jim, this Mike, somebody, i- if some, if you're not speaking, could people please mute? Somebody's got background interference, I don't know, everybody else can hear that, but there's a lot of background interference noise, Scott, is that coming from you?
I, I hear it too, I, I'm hearing it too, so, don't know where it's coming from.
I think it's not a fan on my computer, let, let me mute myself, or what, can someone mute?
There, is that better? Yeah, I don't hear it now. So, so, yeah, I don't hear it now, so it's coming from someone's computer.
I think it was Bob's.
Okay, so we're on, um, Operations Code, is there any, any comments, um, suggestions, uh, questions regarding the Operations Code? I'm sorry, are you, you have your, you're muted, Art? Director Perry?
Perry, is that better?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I think we did a pretty good job with the ad hoc committee with, uh, the CAC helping us. I think most of the changes were made based on things that we knew that were out of line with. So I think it was a pretty good, uh, committee to have and we're now defunct based on, uh, all of the things that we went over, but I, Mike might want to occur with me, concur with me.
Yeah, I, I, I think staff did a really good job of, of walking us through the, um, the things that needed to be changed and I think we, we updated them to, to whatever the modern, you know, the contemporary standards are, so I, I agree with Art, I think, I think we did a, a pretty good job with it.
Any, if there's nothing in the, uh, Operations Code, uh, we can move on to the Employee Handbook. Uh, the, the Employee Handbook is, is really, uh, um, consists of a bunch of policies, personnel policies. A lot, some of it has, is required by law, either state or federal laws, we have to adopt these policies. Um, other policies we adopted and your staff report. Some significant changes to or recommending for, for approval later. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, um, two policies are, are, are not in this, um, um, uh, for your review, uh, and that's, uh, regarding the harassment, discrimination and the drug and alcohol abuse and we'll bring that back, uh, in a couple of weeks, so any, any questions on, on the Employee Handbook?
Uh, yeah, Scott, this Mike, one, could you just talk a minute about three point six? The response to COVID and the procedures that we've had to to integrate into the handbook?
Sure, um, the, the, again, this was actually, um, i- in response to, to, to COVID nineteen, um, in fact, let me, um, pull that up. Let's see, here we go. Give me one second, pulling it up. Taking, so, so those couple of policies that we had to, um, uh, uh, prepare or adopt for, um, the response to COVID nineteen and, and the one that Director Schaefer is referring to is, is one of those policies and I'll just give me a few minutes, it's downloading on my computer right now, so give me one second.
I had a comment. Can you hear me?
Yes, but you're echoing on me.
Okay. Um, on this Board of Directors Procedures Handbook, there's the voting, including quorum and the votes. Now, do we have to say something as an earmark about if you're out of town and you have to have, you know, um, your agenda posted?
Yes, uh, if I may, uh, Board Director, I can answer that question with the, the handbook, um, uh, we, we will, if it's okay with the board, I'll address that um, in a few minutes, right, right now, just want to go through the, um, um, Employee Handbook. Of course, no matter, so, so, um, Secretary Schaefer, you're, I'm sorry, Director Schaefer, you're referring to, to policy number three point six, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, I'm pulling it up, um, so, yes, this is a lengthy policy, uh, here we go, okay, so, um, again, this was, um, a, a policy that we put in place to, to protect employees, um, uh, certain procedures that we put in place to make sure that, uh, we have a safe working environment for our employees. Um, obviously, there's, there's great concerns, uh, for one's safety, so we want to make sure that there's proper procedures in place. For, for example, uh, we make sure that when we have, um, guests coming into HQ that they take a, a questionnaire form, a health questionnaire form that they submit to us before they enter, enter the, um, HQ. Uh, we, we, uh, make sure that if we're, if we're, uh, walking past hallways, we wear our mask, mask coverings is essential. Uh, we also make sure that we have social distancing, um, we do, if we do meet, like on a one-on-one, uh, we make sure that we're properly six feet apart. Uh, we have, we constantly disinfecting our, our desk and our, our computers and our equipments. Um, so these are all, um, kind of identified in the, the policies, uh, the measures that we take to make sure everyone is, is working in, in, in a safe environment. Any, any more questions on, on the Employee Handbook?
No, it looks pretty good.
Okay, very good. Lot of work put into it, so good job by the Okay, if not, I'll go to, um, the administrative policy. Uh, and these are some, uh, in- internal policies, um, that we have, uh, for the district, uh, again, uh, in your staff report, all the policies, uh, that, uh, were, um, makes some changes, there are some new policies that we're recommending, uh, in, in the, um, administrative policies. One, as you know, we have the naming of district facilities, um, that was after, um, we named the yard after, uh, Robin Hamers. Uh, so the board thought it would be a good idea to have a policy in place in case we want to name other, uh, other facilities. We also, um, what other, there were some new, um, let me pull this some up, um, policy manual, pull this one up. Uh, let's see, also, um, you said the Public Works Request Act, uh, that was, also, we had some procedures in place for that, but this is formalized as how, how, uh, the public can record, um, public records. And then we also have, um, uh, the website and mobile application privacy policy, that's, that's a new policy we put in place that just describes, um, you know, people are concerned on what do we use with their information, it describes, uh, on what we can, what we're allowed to do or how we use, uh, information, we receive that from the public. So those are some new policies, um, have to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question on, um, number forty dash, point three-five petty cash, how much, it says, how much in hand do you normally keep for, uh, emergency?
Good question, um,
Just for my own personal records, you know?
Yeah. Well, this is roughly new, um, I don't believe in the past we really had any cash available on hand. So this was kind of a, um, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Caleb, but this was a discussion we have with staff, or what's, what's, what do you think's a, a, a comfort level for having cash on hand, because when there is an emergency, you know, we got, we have to assume that the banks are going to be closed, ATM is going to be shut down, there's a power outage, so we need access to cash. So this was basically, I think, based on our conversation, what's a comfort level for finance to have cash on hand and that's what we decided in the, in, in the head, in the policies, what that available is. There really, there really is no standard, you know, I don't think there is a standard, you know, what other cities or other agencies do, it's just what our comfort level was.
Do you know that amount? Do you know that amount?
Um, If, if I may, Scott?
Yes.
Um, previously, we, um, talked about ten thousand and, uh, uh, um, District Yard Safe and ten thousand, um, HQ. And then we, um, said that might be too much, so we reduce it to five thousand at each location.
Okay. Yeah, because in, at Estanci High School, we had the same thing, we had a emergency fund that the ASB used, that we used, it was like a, uh, fund for ticket sales and things like that, but I was just curious, five thousand seems reasonable in case of
Yeah, and that money would really be used to buying supplies for staff, you know, for food, water, um, any other kind of emergencies, they really, the, obviously, if, if there was a major repair, five thousand dollars is going to cover it. But that's really what, with the five thousand dollars is to buy, primarily, you know, supplies for staff, when we need, especially if there's a long-term type of, you'll see that if we're on our own for seven, two hours or longer, you know, we gotta, we gotta make sure staff, staff has the resources available.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I, just if I could add a comment, um, I don't think we need a ton of cash, if, if the pandemic has taught us anything is so many places are no longer accepting cash. I mean, uh, the fact that we have credit cards and credit available to us is probably just as important as having cash, I mean, again, places aren't taking cash, so, uh, I think five thousand is a reasonable amount.
A good point, but you also gotta consider, there's an earthquake and there's a power outage, no one's going to be able to use their credit cards, because internet's down, access is down, so cash will be king, if that's the case, so it's still good to have cash around, so I think, yes, you're right, uh, Director Schaefer, in this, in this pandemic, yes, no one's taking cash for obvious reasons, but we're considering like, uh, an earthquake, which is the, the one, the one type of disaster that I think everyone's most vulnerable about, vulnerable is, is earthquake and recently we've been having some earthquakes. Got to assume when the big one happens, everything's shut down, everything's going to have, not going to access anything.
As, as long as you don't keep the cash in coins, you should be okay, right?
Right, right, exactly.
Unless they're gold coins.
Okay, if there's nothing else here, um, I'll move on to, um, our, our brand new document and that's the Board Directors Procedures Handbook.
Scott, Scott, um, you know, I had a question. Um, at, at Orange County Sand District, they have a, a kind of a trailer or shed and they have, um, earthquake supplies, like food and water and so on, do, do we have a policy on that and do we have, um, uh, supplies stored, I would think it would be most appropriate to have them in the, at the yard.
We do, we have supplies at both places, we have them here at, um, at, at HQ and, and at, at the yard, we have, uh, food and water, both supplies, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, so the next one is, is the, uh, Board Directors Procedures Handbook and this is a brand new document and again, this was, um, after I attended a, a conference, a, a CSDA conference, it was highly recommended that, you know, you have, uh, such a handbook for your board directors. Uh, learning that we didn't have, well, I thought it was a good idea to, to put one together. So we created this, this handbook and I do have to admit, uh, we, we do not, Mr. Mosher, uh, made some good comments on the handbook and we did not implement, put those, uh, comments in place for your review today, I mean, I did, actually, in the last minute, you, you do have his comments for review, but I have not made any of the changes to, to that booklet yet, so I apologize for that and we'll make sure those are happened at your August meeting. You do have his comments for you on the handbook, if you want to review hi- his, his comments, which are, he has some, uh, I think, very valid comments that we'll, we'll review again and, and make the appropriate changes. But at this point, um, really here to answer any, you know, get us a study session, have an answer, you know, the go, any questions you may have, review the, the draft book and then we'll bring the final version to you in Au- in August.
Uh, Scott, the Orange County Sand District has a Boards of Employees Handbook or Policies. Uh, has, has that been reviewed as, as, uh, as the staff created, uh, this one for the sanitary district?
No, we, we did not review that, um, I believe I just, we, we were reviewing some, um, handbooks from, um, other agencies.
Oh, okay, so you have looked at other agencies?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, this wasn't just, uh, we didn't create by scratch, we, we had help from other agencies.
Okay.
Hey, Scott, Scott, you, there've been times where, at meetings, um, you felt a need to have security presence?
Yes.
Is there anything in this handbook that, that gives direction on that or is that something more in your purview or what do you think?
Yeah, I, I, I believe it, it should be, I mean, up to the general manager to, uh, I mean, obviously, if, if the board has those suggestions too, please, please bring them to my attention, but, but I, I, I believe that the general manager would have a, um, should have a good idea why we need to have their security, um, i- i- if such security is necessary. Uh, obviously, the board feels we should have, we, we can do that too, but, um, if it's okay with the board, I would, I would just leave it up to the general manager to make that determination.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, it's, as long as all of us recognize situations may come up where we're going to ask you to, to take that due diligence and have security there.
Absolutely, not a problem.
But, but I think that's a policy also, the, the, you know, that should give the general manager that authority.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you.
Um, yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll, um, we'll, we'll put them like that in, uh, in the, um, that could be an administrative policy or it could be in the, or it could be in the, um, Board Handbook, we'll, we'll, we'll look at, we'll try to find a policy to put, for you to consider.
I, I have a question, Scott.
Yes.
How about placing How about placing an item on the agenda? Is it still, it has to go through the president to place an item on the agenda?
Scott, that's, that's covered by the operations code. We have that detailed section that was put in place when we had a previous director that was. Asking for a lot of agenda items, and so we have a policy there that is a formalized process.
That's what I was referring to, that's exactly right.
Well, this is the reason though, Alan, shouldn't we, we should have an, in, in the board handbook too, shouldn't we, for consistency?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, well.
That's your first one, it just, I was just asking, and you know, an explanation, make sure it's the same as what we had talked about earlier.
Yeah, just wanna make sure we're consistent.
Yeah, exactly. It goes along with electronic devices also, is that what? With one of the directors.
Right.
That's, those are my questions. That looks pretty good.
We might want to also put the recusal procedure in the board procedures, in case the board member wants to know what he has to do if he has a conflict.
Okay, yeah, good idea.
Yeah, it's a real good idea. Cause that's new, isn't it, Alan?
It's been newly revised, so yes.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Move along then.
Okay, well, we will finalize these documents and bring it back to you for, for adoption.
Okay. So we are. Are we an item of study seven?
Item six, Mr. President, sewer master plan update status. And I'll give this to, I'll turn this over to Mike Vinesh to, to give this report.
Okay.
I, I had a comment, yeah, I, I think.
I got it.
Mike and his crew have done a very, a fantastic job. My question was more related to the CIP. We, we still, we still have. Many brick manholes. In the district, as a matter of fact, most of them are, are old and they're, and they're brick. And, and we've begun to rehab those manholes. And what I'd like to see is a, a set of criteria. For how we determine that, and, you know, so, so that we can knowledgefully budget it. There's also a, a lingering item on the CIP, and it may not, these items may not need to be in the master plan, but. We also need, we also, in the CIP, routinely fund manhole upgrades or repairs or replacements or whatever. You know, we pay the city, I think, to do that. I don't think that necessarily needs to be in there, but. That or other things that we, that, that will come into the budget, you know, that haven't been covered by the master plan. You know, I don't know if we need to think through that at all. The most major one, I think, is the brick manholes, you know, we, I think three quarters of our nearly five thousand brick, our, our manholes are brick, and they've got. Anyway, I think you've heard what I, what I'm thinking.
Yes, well, we will, I'll be with staff and we'll look at how do we. Draft some criteria to determine which manholes we rehabilitate. Right now, we're just going based on age and making some assumptions, but we can draft some criteria, maybe, you know, maybe some of these older manholes that are bricks, maybe they can last a bit longer, you know, but if we, unless we have some criterias to evaluate that we don't know for sure, so we'll, we'll look at, dress some, some criteria.
Yeah, I mean, somebody has to investigate them. Staff doesn't get in every manhole, but, you know. Because they don't need to when they clean.
Right. We'll bring that back for you.
Yeah, no, it just, thank you.
Okay, sewer master plan update, is that, are we done with that?
I don't know, Mike, do you have anything to add for the, for that, Mike?
Well, yeah, on the manhole repairs, the, the surface repairs, the city does go through, and when they have projects, they bring them up to, to the surface and repair them. And we reimburse them for that. We also have another project where, when the field crews are out doing their maintenance, if they notice there's issues with the manhole covers and frames. Then we have projects where we go out and we repair those. So it's actually two different kinds of projects.
Those things are always in, in the CIP and, and need to be, but not necessarily in the master plan, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a report here, but I don't know if I want to read through all of it, if there's no questions on the master plan update.
No, I thought it was wonderful. I thought, I think, I think you're doing a very good job.
I like the way you laid it out, it's, it's great.
Thank you.
For the priority ranking and estimated cops, that's really good.
Well, in that regard. We have a priority ranking, but do we? Are you able to assign a schedule to that priority? I mean, do we just do one and then we finish that one and then we do three?
No, what we've done in the past, for instance, in two thousand and five master plan update, there were seven identified lines that would need future improvement.
Yeah.
Out of those seven, we've only done one. Because the flows in those lines have not reached a point where, where it's imperative to go ahead and do it.
Right.
And the idea here would be, we would do the same thing, we would keep monitoring these every few years, and when they reach a point where they need replacement, we'll go ahead and do it.
One last question. In, in your, in one of the lists, you had the upgrading the canyon pump station. Pump, pump capacity. Didn't, didn't we just finish a project that upgraded the canyon pump station and its force main?
I believe we did the force main. I'll have to check on whether or not we upgraded pumps, but. In the future, and it's not anytime in the near future, but sometime in the future, they're gonna be below the capacity they need to be.
Sure, okay.
Item. Seven, consider adopting resolution twenty twenty nine thirty-two endorsing the following candidates to serve the independent special district of Orange County. They are Mark Monan. Arlene Schaefer. And Mary Eileen Mathias.
I have a question on this, Jim, is I, I, I went to the ISDOC meeting and watched it. And they, there was some controversy about having a slate of officers that we vote on, because. The deadline, I think the deadline said that it's not, we may have other people coming in to the, to fill those offices besides the four that we have listed here. So I just wanted to get some clarification from Arlene, because I, I thought that, that they wait, they wanted to wait to find out, find out other people coming in. Is that correct? Did anybody else go to that meeting?
Yeah, I said, I was at the meeting, Art, and yeah, the, the problem I have with doing this slate this early is none of these candidates have been endorsed by their respective districts. And they have until September eleventh for all the candidates to file. I would prefer to wait until we see who all the candidates are bef- before we decide on a slate.
Okay, okay, can I add on to that?
Yeah, go ahead, Arlene.
Okay, actually, what happened was, we're pretty divided. So right now, there are some people that really want the slate, and there are some people that definitely do not want the slate. And so the president, Sandra, said, why don't we turn around and go ahead and get these people in to, as a proclamation? To see first of all, if they're even okay with their board to go ahead and run. And the way I had put it was. We. We, I want a slate, and a lot of us do. Mr. Fissler indicated how he did not want the slate, and it was important to him to have Greg Mills in there and to do some other stuff that he wanted to do. And so he felt very strong on not having it, so it's a matter of the agencies, first of all, putting in a proclamation, and then if they can voice their opinion, if they want a slate or not. And then Sandra said, as president, at the next meeting, you know, then she'll talk about what we're doing, if we, we should have individuals in, there's no problem with that. If they want to be, but, or if the slate oversees it, then they go with the slate.
When is the date that all of the names have to be submitted, Arlene?
Well, see, Mike said, it was not until the eleventh of September, but at the same time, as soon as we get this of proclamations, we know who is really going to be running. Because maybe through this slate that's presented, which is what we have before us, maybe some of the people are not going to have a proclamation. A resolution or something, indicating their agency is backing them, so this was it.
Arlene, doesn't the ISDOC have a nominating committee?
You know, they don't. This is, it's so strange, because they should have one, and I don't even know who in the end is gonna take care of this.
Yeah, there, there is no nominee, and I agree with you, Arlene, there needs to be a nominating committee, and they've never done it, they've always sort of relied on the president or the outgoing president to come up candidates. And, and I don't think that's the correct, but, but my problem with this resolution we're looking at today, I don't have a problem with a slate. If we have a slate of officers, I, I don't have a problem with that. What I have a difficulty with right now is approving the candidates that are in this agenda item right now, before we have resolutions from their districts saying that they're. I think we should wait till September, when we have all the candidates, when everybody's in the pile, right now, there's only one candidate on your slate that I support. And that's you, I mean, we, we, our district needs to take care of you now, and then in September, we look at all of the candidates, and if we have a slate that we're gonna support, go, go at that point.
Well, my, you know, my suggestion is that, you know, number one, we just do a proclamation saying that I'm in, or a resolution, whatever it is, just saying that I would be running for first vice president, that's it. And not do the slate necessarily right now to see what happens, but at the next meeting, we, we can talk some more at the meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's the, the more prudent thing to do is, and I, I to- I totally agree, we need to do, if, if the timing is that we need to set up a resolution to be approved at the board meeting, supporting your candidacy. I, I definitely think that's what we should do now.
Yeah, I have to be out there.
Now, we, we could do that at the August twenty-fourth board meeting, recommend Arlene. For this, in a, in a resolution.
In fact, I, yeah, I even brought in a letter, you know, my candidate's statement, which is real small, simple, and once it's done. I'm sure Nalani can send it out to you so you can see what it says, but that's all I need for now, because that would be vice president.
Well, Arlene, Ar- Arlene, should we say, Arlene Schaefer for first vice president, or should we just say that we nominate Arlene? Because if Mark Mon- Mon doesn't run. Do you only want the first vice president?
Mark is running, Bob, I talked to Mark.
Right, at the meeting, at the meeting, I suggested that we think about this, that when Eileen from Irvine Ranch Water District and Joan Finnegan from. The MODOC and I were involved, we did the bylaws, and we kind of checked out what was going on with the bylaws. When we did this, we always had a slate, this was years ago, and I said, the simple part was, when you have a slate, you know who's going to come up through the ranks, and they get used to what they're doing and procedure. And so that's when I was opposed to, somebody opposed me for that and said, you know, I think that anyone could, and it doesn't mean that anyone can't go for me, you know?
What's the wishes of the board?
I, I would, Jim, I'd recommend that we ask Nalani or Alan to, to draft the resolution in support of Arlene for first vice president of ISDOC, and that we vote on it. Or consider it, rather, at the August board meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would go along with that myself. I think that's a prudent way to go.
I agree.
Okay. We don't need to take formal action on that, just direction to the staff. Am I right?
Right.
Okay, then let's move along. What's that?
Arlene needs to mute.
Okay. Let's move along then to. Closing items.
Hey, Jim, this is Mike, let me, can I lead off on oral communications?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got two things I want, wanna, to bring up. The first. This Friday, the fourteenth, for those of you that know Dennis Timoney with SDRMA, Dennis is retiring as the chief risk officer for SDRMA on the fourteenth, this Friday, it's, it's his last day. SDRMA and CSDA are planning on a virtual farewell recognition tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock. And I have emailed Nalani the details of how you can join that farewell if you want to. It's at three o'clock tomorrow afternoon, and there'll be a link that Nalani, if Nalani gets the email, and I'll, I'll double check with her, that you can all link, log on to the virtual. Farewell for Mr. Timoney. And then the, the second item, Jim, that I wanted to bring up is, it, it's a procedural thing with our, with our board meetings. And what it is, is, you know, at the end of, at the end of the regular agenda, we do our oral reports on the meetings that we're scheduled to attend. And they, it seems to have become a little cumbersome, and, and I would like to suggest that, that instead of us presenting orally our meetings. That we do a written report, a very brief, one or two sentence report on the meetings that we've attended, and attach those to our monthly reimbursement report. And there's a couple of advantages that I see to that. Oh, by the way, I, I talked to Scott about this, and he talked to Alan, and we are. Procedurally, we can do that, we don't have to give an oral report, we can do a small written report and attach it to our reimbursement form. I, I think it allows us to give more consistent reports. You know, the public will have in writing what we've attended, you know, our regularly scheduled meetings like CSDA and SDRMA and SERF and all those, so that we don't have to. Go through our notes, you know, at a board meeting and try to remember what that meeting was, we can, we can have it more concise, and the public can see it right on our website with our, our consent calendar. So I think it'll help streamline the meetings, move meetings along a little quicker and give us more time probably for other issues, but. I've asked Scott to, to kind of look into that, and I hope you guys are okay with that, and Scott, if you're there still, maybe, we can give a report at the board meeting on some kind of pre, you know, a form that's already pre-formatted that we can fill in.
Sure.
I agree completely with that. In fact, at our meetings that we go to, we're all sitting there writing away to remember things, and you don't really get to look at the speaker or, you know. You have to pick out what you want to write for, so I, I think that's a great idea. I like it.
Okay, so if, if that's okay.
Don't we? Formal action?
I, I, I would like Scott to come back with some kind of form at the next board meeting or at a board meeting where we can take that formal action, if we want to.
Uh, yeah, I've done that in the past, and I don't do it personally, but uh, you know, I, uh, some people that reviewed it en- enjoyed that process. Re- reading my notes on the meetings.
So we're giving direction to Scott to bring that back to us at the next meeting.
So right now.
If that's okay, buddy, yeah, I I think.
Right now, we're still doing the regular one we've done before?
I think we've all, yeah, it's at our, our regular board meeting, we'll uh introduce this and vote on it.
I think we all, we still would, still would have the option of letting everyone know exactly what we did if it's important to the meeting.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
And, and, sorry, I forgot that part.
And and also, are, sometimes you attend a, a meeting the day of the board meeting, so you you could expand on that.
Exactly, exactly. But I think, I think we've always had the option of putting it in writing or verbalizing it. And I think we should just keep the same option, but you could, you could probably do more written report if you want, but sometimes it's better to have a communication verbally.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah. I agree.
Okay, do Scott, do you understand where we're at here?
Yes, I, I've directed, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, well, let's um move along. Uh. We have uh does anybody have any comments they'd like to make? We're going to.
One.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. The, you can hear me?
Yes, we can, I can hear you.
Nobody is answering, so I don't know. I, I'm the only one in here, and I'll never do this again, because it's, it's hard, because I have to mute, unmute, and you know.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
It's real crazy. Anyway, what my comment was, was that I think that we should write a letter uh to Dennis, as well as what we're doing tomorrow, you know, that will be told, for the simple reason that Dennis has been with us for so long. And we have gotten so many points, we're going to different attendance when he speaks. It's just my comment. Mike can make a comment too, but I just think that you can't leave it alone, because he is so dedicated. He's been so great.
I, I, I would, i- i- if it's not too much trouble for the staff, Arlene, I'd like to see us do a proclamation for Dennis and thanking him. And we send it up to SDRMA, and I know he would get a big kick out of that, and
Yes.
Scott, if that's not too much work for you, maybe a, a, a proclamation in thanks to Dennis.
Mm-hmm. On our behalf, because he's served us so well.
Agreed.
Well, I, I think Arlene and Mike, you, you'll need to um, you know, make input, give Scott some, some things to say on that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm usually never at a loss for words, Bobby.
Yeah, al- also, maybe you should stick to the form where it's short and sweet.
Yeah.
Uh, it's called kiss.
Mike, you would be good at this for the simple reason that you're sitting up there with them. I mean, along with, you know.
I'd be glad to help him with, with anything.
Just some whereas is.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for adjournment.
Um, well, wait, Jim, I have one more thing.
Oh.
I, I, I want to, I want to congratulate my two colleagues, Art Perry and James Ferryman, for the initiative of running again for office for the Board of Directors. Congratulations to both to you, uh, both of you, um, your friends and your colleagues, and I think both of you have served the sanitary district so well, uh, and I congra- congratulate you both for sticking your necks out once again.
Well, thank you, Mike. We appreciate it.
And I have one, I have one.
You have, you have something?
I was wondering if uh Mi- Mike if uh from CRNR, if he could find out when we will be having some kind of banner again on our trash trucks? Because we haven't had it for some time, and they said in August, and August is going to come and roll. So maybe we need to be kind of tapped and remind them.
Yep, I'm already working on that this morning. The tr- the, the truck fleet that serves Costa Mesa has recently been repainted, and the the decals were removed. We, we do have some extras, and we're ordering more to cover the entire fleet. So it's in the works and should be happening very, very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, okay, I think we're, are we ready for adjournment, or do we, is there anything else to be brought forward? In that case, the next study session of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board of Directors will be held on Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, at nine thirty AM in the Director's Boardroom located at two ninety Polarino Avenue, Costa Mesa. Nothing else is going to be brought forward. This meeting is adjourned.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good job, Jim.